I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to the October 23 meeting of the New Bern Board of Aldermen. At this time tonight, the prayer will be given by Alderman Astor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you and the city or the public, Mr. Ron Purifoy. Mr. Purifoy, if you'd come up, please. Ron has been with the City of New Bern Public Works Department for 13 years. He is, and the question was asked tonight, he is our street sweeper. So, he's the one that you see out at two or three o'clock in the morning.
Middle Street, 5:00 a.m. I know exactly where you're at.
And in addition, he's an ordained minister at, I know it's a local church in Pitch Kettle. Which church is it?
It's the Covenant of God.
And it is in Pitch Kettle, right?
On Piney Knit Road.
I'd appreciate it if you could give us a new prayer.
Let's all pray. Father, we thank you, Almighty God, that we're able to be in your presence. We ask you, Father, tonight, Lord, is to open up our council members' eyes and hearts tonight. We ask you, Father, also, for a mighty touch, touch each family, Lord, here tonight. Father, this went through this storm and everything. We ask you, Father, right now, is just to have your way tonight, Father, in this meeting. We give you all the praise and the glory for it, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am clerk, would you call the robe?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris.
Present.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay. This time, we have some very important topic here tonight. The Boys Scout Troop Number 132 from Garber United Methodist Church is with us. Yeah.
Okay, welcome.
And as a part of that, you have to come up and come to the podium, speak loudly, tell us who you are. Tell us a little bit about your Cub Scout group.
Boy Scout.
Boy Scout group. As part of leadership.
My name is William Corey, and I'm part of 132 at Garber.
Welcome.
My name is Reed Taylor, and I go to Troop 132 at Garber.
Welcome to the city.
My name is John Sands, and I go to Garber.
Welcome, welcome.
My name is George Cassiello. I'm in Troop 132 at Garber.
Welcome.
My name is James Minster, and I go to Troop 132.
Well, thank you and welcome, and we're just glad to have you with us tonight. And we have some additional, very important agenda item here tonight. The Boys and Girls Club of New Bern is with us, and if you would, please come up and tell us who you are.
All right, you can start with our you, and then I'll introduce myself and our coordinator come up and introduce yourselves and tell them what's for you.
Hello, my name's Miranda Hatley, and I go to H.J. McDonald.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Felica Perry, and I go to New Bern High School.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Katrina Perry, and I go to New Bern High.
Welcome to the meeting.
Hello, my name is Cam Dornell, and I go to New Bern High.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Yolanda Perez, and I go to Craven County College.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Melinda Flowers, and I go to Groseam.
Well, welcome.
Hello, my name is Fran Robinson, and I currently serve as the team site coordinator at New Bern.
Well, thank you for coming up tonight. Thanks for being with us.
Yes, and my name is Jane Shermer. I'm the unit director for our two locations here in New Bern, and would like to say thank you for the proclamation. The Lights on After School is a national event that was chartered in 2001 to celebrate the effectiveness and the need for after-school programs across the country. It is a celebration that's taking place everywhere this Thursday night, so thank you for recognizing the importance of after-school programs. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we're going to go to the consent agenda, does everybody have a chance to look that over?
May I like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion and second, is there a discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. This time, I am number five, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Warehouser in our company is developing approximately 575 acre mixed-use development that will be known as West New Bern. Many of you have seen their marketing campaign already started. A development agreement between the city and the developer will establish responsibilities pertaining to utility delivery, phasing, and design standards during the construction of the property. A public hearing has been called for and properly noticed to receive public comments on the proposed agreement. After hearing those comments, the board is asked to consider approving the development agreement. There's memos, including a packet from Mr. Ruggeri, our director of development services, a copy of the agreement and information on the development. I will say typically on situations to where you see these developer agreements, they come oftentimes when a developer sees a project that they plan on implementing over a long period of time. It may be 10, it may be 20 years, whatever that may be. And in that development, what they're looking to do is establish the design standards that will be consistent throughout the entire phasing of the property. So, that is pretty much in a summary of what this agreement outlines, is that based on our current design standards today, this agreement will lock in those design standards moving forward. Now, that disagreement will not trump any kind of state or federal changes to any kind of stormwater, whatever that may be, at the environmental state level or whatever, but ultimately, this will lock in their design standards regarding the city's design standards. So, if the 28-foot wide street is applicable today, that will be the design standards that they will design their community for throughout the duration of this development. So, that kind of summarizes to some extent what this developer agreement does.
Okay, before any questions or anything at this time? If there's not any more questions, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to... You don't need to... I'm going to open a public hearing, you can make a motion to close it. At this time, I'm going to open a public hearing. Anybody from the public that would like to come up and ask any questions, make any concerns or statements known concerning this agreement, resolution approving the development agreement, you're welcome to come up at this time. No one's coming forward. I'd like to close the public hearing, please.
Second.
You have a motion by Alderman Kinsey, seconded by Alderman Odom, to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. Is there any questions? We're now back in the discussion. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
So, when was this put out to the public, basically when we put out our agenda, you're saying, or has it been out prior to that?
Madam clerk, was that two to four weeks ago?
Yeah. I'm looking to see. I know that the ad ran in the newspaper for two weeks.
Yeah, there's statutory requirements that we have to meet based on North Carolina statutes as far as public notice on...
Right. My only concern would be essentially we're in the recovery mode in hurricane season. Do you think people were able to get their mail and get the notice so that... Because I'm sure something as big as this, there's going to want people to come and speak on it. Should we not hold this to another agenda item? I mean...
I think the confusion is it's not actually building, it's just the development agreement that to develop it. I don't think it's any building stand...
Right. Well, the development agreements, I can remember back when we had a meeting where there was concerns when we were building the houses and Mr. Bobby Astor's, you know, how the... when the fire trucks and stuff needed to come in. I mean, is that what this is bas...
Coliseum.
Right, the Coliseum, and just what Mark just said about the... how the street is going to be. There was actually no one here, so I'm saying because we had a hurricane, don't you think we should be transparent, at least put it, hold off or put it on to the next so that there is enough time for people to really understand what this agreement is about because...
No one lives there, right?
Yeah, just for...
Right, no one lives there, but it's the development process, and before, when we've had issues, we've had developers come back and complain about certain things on how we set standards, so this is an opportunity, if there's people that wanted to speak up. I'm just saying because of the hurricane, was it enough time for people to read the newspaper and want to come and have questions based on this? That's what I'm saying.
Well, there'd be two sets of constituents. One is the developer, who's a party to the agreement, who's here this evening, and of course, we've worked with them for several years now, working through these details. They've agreed to all these higher standards that are included in this current agreement. There's nothing been sold, so there are no property owners on this track that would have worries or concerns about something being changed without their understanding.
Okay.
The neighborhood communities would be across the highway from this, so I certainly appreciate your concerns, but I'm just not sure there's any stakeholders who...
Got you.
...at this point would have a concern, and the answer to those concerns would be, these are the rules that are currently in place citywide for everyone.
Okay. That's fine, I just want to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I think, probably what Alderman Harris was mentioning, I think this would actually alleviate that concern of what she expressed in the future if those design standards were to change. This is kind of locking them into where it is today, and they're certainly familiar with it because they're the ones that's asking for the agreement.
Got you.
The only question that I have would be, when would the actual annexation take place of this property? Because I saw, I think Alderman Bingle asked a question today about being Ward 5, and it looks like according to the map, this developer agreement is for the part north of 70, not the southern portion, so will that happen? When will that process take place?
The default setting is that the developer will come forward with a general plan, get that plan approved, and then at that point, the property would be annexed by phases.
Thank you. Mayor, if there's any more questions, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the development agreement with Warehouser in our company for West New Bern.
Second. Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Kinsey, is there further discussion? C and N, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries. I am number six, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is a request of the board to have some discussion and potentially a decision on redirecting some capital funds that were budgeted for in fiscal year 1819, which is in the electric fund, which is our current fiscal year. The FY19 budget for the electric fund included $180,000 to replace a bucket truck. Mr. Bouchard, our new director of public utilities, has expressed a greater need for some other equipment necessary for them to do some very difficult-to-reach excavating and highly vegetated areas. That may be backlot-type stuff, especially you may be familiar with the Jefferson area, Jefferson Street, some of those areas, Jefferson Avenue, I'm sorry. Those have some backyard, backlot-type work that has to be done. Very difficult to get bucket trucks and other items down that particular part of the utility easements that we have, so he's looking to redirect some of that. The combined cost of these two items that he's looking to purchase, which one is a mini excavator and the other is a skid steer. The estimated cost for the skid steer is $107,000, and the mini excavator is $45,000. So, combined, that's $152,000 versus the $180,000 of capital improvement in the budget. So, we're requesting board approval tonight to redirect those budgeted funds for the purchase of these two items, and the intent is to request the funding in the 2020 budget fiscal year to replace the bucket truck that we had previously requested in this year's budget. Happy to answer any questions.
So, you're not buying the bucket truck, but you want to buy the, this other two-piece equipment? Is that the way I understand it?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Was there a need for these two pieces of equipment during this hurricane cleanup?
Absolutely. There's needs for it probably about every day, mostly.
With the board's pleasure.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we redirect capital funds budgeted for in the fiscal year 1819 to the proposed use.
Second. Motion by Alderman Bingle, seconded by Alderman Kinsey, is there further discussion? C and N, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
I am number seven, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is the consideration of our 2019 holiday calendar. In accordance with personnel ordinance, the City of New Bern holiday schedule must be approved annually by the Board of Aldermen. This proposed schedule reflects the observance of 14 holidays during 2019. Just to note, this schedule mirrors the holidays to be observed by Craven County like we normally do.
That was my question. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like a motion that we approve the 2019 holiday calendar.
Second. Motion by Alderman Astor, seconded by Alderman Kinsey, is there further discussion? C and N, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries. I am number eight, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. And coinciding with our holiday calendar, each year, the board also approves the 2019 Board of Aldermen meeting roster. This is the city charter requiring us to have regular meetings to be held on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, beginning at 6:00 p.m. The proposed meeting dates are identified on the attached roster schedule that's included in your packet, which will also include two scheduled budget work sessions. Obviously, we can call for special meetings or have any other additional meetings, work sessions, that the board wishes to do so at the request of the board and approval by the board, but ultimately, this sets the schedule for our typical business meetings for the next year.
The budget workshops are not here either?
They are included in there.
They are?
Let me check to make sure.
April 30th and May the 1st?
Yes.
I thought we talked about we should start a little bit earlier.
Earlier, that's what I was curious about. Just because we felt kind of rushed, and then we delayed the approval of the budget because we had, we really wanted a chance to interact with the department heads and that we need to do so. Is it... I know it, you may want to go back and look at that and see if you want to do something earlier, or maybe have one maybe at the end of March, one at, you know, the middle of April, and then if we need the other ones, you can do that, but I mean, just something to keep us... We did discuss that the last time. Just a suggestion. Again, we can call for a workshop at any time, correct?
Yes, you can call for a work session at any point, and typically, those are the two days where the department heads come in and present their budget to you with a little more detail and allow the board to ask any detailed questions regarding that. I would probably need to talk with Mr. Savatelli about the moving it up earlier. The concern obviously would be is would we have the full budget completely done at that point? Sometimes, we're still waiting on numbers such as insurance numbers to come in, things like that, for you to have a very accurate budget that's presented to you.
I think there was more concern, maybe not necessarily having the whole piece, but that we maybe interact or got some feedback as far as requested items so that we weren't pulling the budget apart like we did last year and said, okay, wait a minute, you know, we've talked to the Martin heads, now they need this, let's add this, let's add that, maybe try to prevent that from happening again. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, fellow board members, but I believe we talked about that, so it wasn't...
Well, when?
So stressful on you all.
Are you going to pull this and get some dates, or are you going to add some dates to it tonight, or...
Well, I mean, it's okay the way it is because we can always make changes, correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Which one of these is the one where we go sit over at the development services and hash out what we want to do for the year?
Generally, we do that as a retreat, and that retreat, generally, we try to schedule that based on everyone's schedule. We don't automatically schedule that, it's more of a special retreat-type meeting, so come, say, December-ish, we may start having that. Maybe before we leave for the Christmas break, we only have that one meeting. That would be an opportunity for us to set that meeting or that retreat date. That will give us a good month or so to get any kind of information that you want to be covered underneath the retreat topics.
Would it be possible to do it at the retreat? Is speak to department heads about what they may need for a budget, or are you saying that's too soon?
We definitely could do that. By that time, they will probably have submitted their items to at least the finance department, or they would have their, a good idea. Generally speaking, I can tell you that me as a department head, I know generally, closing out the end of the calendar year, I was starting to prepare and work on all of my budgeting and capital requests and things like that, and things that I knew that were coming up, so that whenever the budget documents came out from the finance department, I was filling up, filling out those. So, and I'm sure probably most of the department heads work along the same lines, because those documents come out, say, in January, from early January from J.R. and his staff, and then ultimately, we set a deadline date. And generally, it's been, the deadline date has been after the retreat so that we can include whatever items the board wants to discuss at the retreat into the budget, because we may need to go back and cut out some items out of our budget to be able to make your initiatives and your things that you want to accomplish in the next fiscal year work. So, but we can, we can do whatever the board wishes.
I was just trying to think of a way so it's not just so much, and then we're not adding all these extra meetings too, because we don't want to sit around beating on a dead horse either with some of these topics based on how we did last season, so I'm just trying to make it easier where everyone across the board is being satisfied, but how the...
Yeah. And obviously, the sooner the better that the board, if they have certain initiatives that may have some significant dollars tied to them, the sooner they can let us know about those, the better off it is, even, I mean, it's not too early now for y'all to start having those discussions with us so that we can start pulling that information together. What we, what has generally been the case is, is we get into the budget work sessions as you're discussing, Alderman Bingle, and it's, oh, we need to do this, and we need to do that. To be honest with you, that puts a lot more pressure on us to develop the budget at that point than it is if we were to have it at the retreat, to be able to get everything, have a knowledge, and then we can finalize the budget. Everything that y'all requested and approved as a board is in that budget. It makes it a whole lot easier to just go forward and rubber stamp and finish something out.
That's why I was suggesting that, because I knew it was troublesome, what we did last time.
With the board's pleasure, I am eight.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the 2019 Board of Aldermen meeting roster.
Second. Motion by Alderman Bingle, seconded by Alderman Astor, is there further discussion? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. Appointments, Alderman Odom.
Yes, sir. We discussed our last meeting, the vacancy we have on the act board, and Ms. Amanda, our new economic and community development manager, has graciously stepped up. I thought it would be a good fit with her coming from Havlock, she has some experience in that area, so unless she gives me a different look, I'd like to nominate her to fill this role.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. Yes.
Just for clarification, because I did have someone reach out to me, for the person to sit on this board, they had to actually work for the City of New Bern, correct?
Not necessarily for that position.
On allies? I thought it had to be staff or a city member. Isn't that what it's always been? Board member, staff? Do we have any clarification?
Okay, yeah, I need clarification then, because I...
I know Mr. Booker called me and said that he served as the city, and then when he was no longer Alderman, he had to get off, but he went back on as an at-large member, so I'm assuming...
It has to be a city.
It has to be someone that's employed with the city.
Can we double-check, and I take back my second, because there's someone that was very interested, who is a vet, and she does a lot in the city. She lives in... I need to know if you have to live within the city, because she lives within Craven County. She would be interested in sitting on this board, and I didn't bring it because I was trying to find out this information.
We would need to ask for their bylaws to be able to determine what the criteria is specifically, so we can research that.
Yeah, we have to get with allies for to check point their bylaws.
So, can we hold off on appointing?
Because I do have someone that's interested.
The moving party would need to withdraw their motion to undo what's been done or go forward. Yeah, a motion and a second, so the process is...
Why would I withdraw my second? Am I allowed to do that?
Well, you can't withdraw your second, so the person, you've already seconded, so the person who made the motion could acquiesce or not.
The only concern I have is whether or not we're restricted for somebody to be a staff member or not. If you're going to put somebody on a board as a city representative and they don't live in the city, that's, to me, that's a little troublesome. I mean, it's supposed to be the voice of the City of New Bern, and they're looking out for our interest, so if somebody doesn't live in the city, they may look out for the interest of the county or another municipality that they represent or where they live versus representing the city. I think that's probably a little touchy, in my opinion.
Okay, that's fine, then I'll move forward.
Okay, so you are not withdrawing your second?
Right. We'll just keep it as is.
We good?
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Any other appointments?
No, sir.
Alderman Best.
I know I need to make an appointment to the Board of Adjustments, but, and there was a gentleman that was interested, Mr. Jim Morrison. He expressed his interest in serving on the Board of Adjustments, but I have not talked with him yet, so we possibly have that information available for the next board meeting, if that's not too late.
Well, I do know at times they have, I wouldn't say they have a lack of form, but they do have several. I'm sure they'd be like for us to put that on as soon as we could. I do know Mr. Morrison served on HPC for quite a few years and did show an interest in what you're talking about, and so time is kind of the assets to fill that, but it's your pleasure, what you want to do.
The current appointee can still serve until new appointments made.
That's right.
I would like to, I would like to talk with this gentleman first before I appoint him to a board.
Sure.
Okay. Alderman Kinsey.
Not at this time, sir.
Alderman Astor.
Nothing.
Alderman Harris.
No, sir.
And Alderman Bingle.
Yes. Okay, one is the library board, and it's not necessarily my appointment, it's, the board can do it, but, you know, you all were so kind to appoint me to that board, and I've been serving on it, and they recently lost two members that are appointed by the City of New Bern, so I did find somebody who had an interest, so I would like to go ahead and appoint Diane Booker to fill the seat of Erica Faluki, or Faluk?
Second.
Okay.
No doubt about it.
And she's interested, I've spoken to her, and she is interested in serving in it. Then we'll still have one more seat that we have to fill on the library board, so if anybody is interested in the Library Board, please contact one of the Alderman.
I think I just heard Bobby say he wanted to do it.
Okay, so you have a motion, second, did you get the Alderman Bingle, Alderman Harris? Any discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same?
Okay, and then the last one is, we have been working with the Redevelopment Commission, who's been doing a great job, I'll tell you, they have had two meetings, I'm very pleased they actually adopted their boundaries, that are going to go to the Planning and Zoning Board, and eventually come to us, but we had appointed Mr. David Herndon, and he did attend the meeting the other night, and then he reached out to me and to Mr. Ruggieri, to say that he's had some real challenges with a home in Pembroke that has been flooded, and he has some family members that just require more of his time, and his concern was that he did not have enough time to serve on this Board, so he asked to resign. So, and that said, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Maria Cho, who has expressed great interest, you know, she's been very active, and I believe she would do an excellent job, so I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and second, is there a discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Any others?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Attorneys report?
Uh, one item, Mayor, members of the Board, wanted to update you on the Carolina Avenue Agreement. At our last meeting, you may recall that Alderman Odom asked me if I'd be interested in to have that on the agenda for this week, and I confirmed that we certainly would. I was able to get a draft agreement over to the Housing Authority's attorneys, middle of last week, followed up with them on Thursday, to do two things, one, make sure they got it, and also to let them know that I didn't want them to feel pressured by the city, that we had to go forward on Tuesday. From a lawyer's point of view, having a few business days is oftentimes not enough to digest something, meet with your client, and fully think it through, so I want to let them know that I'm at their disposal to make sure it gets on the agenda, but that didn't mean that I was insisting, or that you were insisting, that it had to come on this agenda, recognizing that they might need time to reflect. The second issue I wanted to discuss with them, because that was really the first time I've had a chance to talk to their attorneys, you know, one-on-one, and just want to remind them that when this property was donated to the city a number of years ago, it was because the present owner believed that the property was not developable, given the wetlands and the expense to get to the uplands, that it might not be a viable piece of property. So, they donated it to the city with the thinking that we might use it for a park, or other recreational activities, where the wetlands wouldn't be that major of an issue. All that being said, I know the Housing Authority is aware of that fact, they've spent time and effort, Mr. Blaney mentioned that he walked out there after the hurricane, and I just want to acknowledge, attorney to attorney, please be alert, you know, to this issue, and speak with your client about it, make sure we all understand what we're doing going forward, because the last thing I want to see is either of us spending time and money over something that after a year or two turns out to be a project that can't happen. So, this is the moment to reflect on it, check it out, make sure that we know how to go forward together, and they confirm that we do that. So, the ball's in their court, I'm at their disposal, my hope is it'll be on the next agenda, but it's really going to be driven by, by their ability to sort things out at this point.
Okay.
Good?
Anything else?
No, sir.
Attorney's, City Managers' report?
Um, well, I'm going to kind of leave the first part of it up to the Board. I gave an update on the press conference information, if you wish for me to do that again for this particular Board meeting, I'll do that.
I would, I would encourage people to go online and check the video out, because, I mean, I think that would be a good idea, because there's a lot of good information, so I would encourage.
And I, I do want to say, I just want to say the dates, being that the Board kind of did chose, did choose to go forward with those. Vegetative and construction debris, our anticipated final date of, I guess, opportunity for you to put that at the curb will be November the 5th. That storm-related debris, the contractor will continue to work the next week in collecting that material, but November the 5th, storm-related debris, whether that's construction-related, demolition-related, or vegetative-related, needs to be set at the curb. Once November the 5th passes, we will go back to our normal collection schedules, with regards to our vegetative leaf and limb debris, as well as our brown goods and lot goods.
I, I thought, and I wrote, maybe I wrote it down wrong, but I thought you said November the 5th for leaf and limb, and the 15th for C and D.
Yeah, that's what I wrote down.
Anticipated final pass for storm debris on both was November the 5th, and the completion would be on November the 15th.
And that's when we were going to change our rate, the rate for the utility?
And November the 15th is also the day that we stop all of our waiver with regards to utilities.
So, so someone has until the 15th to put it out, is that what you're saying?
I would not say that, they have until the 5th to put it out. That gives them the rest of this week, this weekend, all of next week, and next weekend, I think, and then, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the 5th is a Monday, is that correct, Matt? So, two weekends, and a week and a half on that, so.
Well, I, I would just, I would just question, since talking to our friends at Team Rubicon today, and they're having, they have 126 jobs on their books, I'm just wondering if, for the C and D, I'm just wondering if they can get it completed by November the 5th?
If not, can we do a case-by-case, and then be contacted and picked it, pick it up, but go back on regular schedule?
I, I think if Team Rubicon could get us a list, we could probably work with that list, but we've got to put a stop at it at some point. Otherwise, we're going to lose contractors to Florida, regardless. So, we need to get our residents to be proactive, and get as much of their stuff out there, that storm-related debris, as, as much as possible, because, I mean, these guys get paid by the Cubic Yard, you know that, they get paid by the ton, so if they're spending 10 hours a day searching for 15 small piles, and that's all they're collecting, then their profitability goes down, this is a private enterprise, so we understand that. But obviously, we've, we've been monitoring the volumes, as they've been coming in, and they have reduced significantly, and that's the reason why we're letting some of our other crews, but we will continue to collect.
Well, will there be a press release or something sent to us, that we can pass it on to?
I, I will share, yes, all of that information, we'll have it on social media, I just needed the Board to make that decision tonight, and then we will put all of that information together and send it out. Yes, sir. The other item that I just wanted to hit on, real quick, Mayor, is we, one group that we did miss, we have some of our leadership Craven folks that are here, this is another class, the newest class, they just had their kickoff meeting, Mayor, you were there, you and I, and Commissioner Tyson, and the County Manager, Jack Byke, we were there for a certain portion of the day. They have also asked for me to give them a tour of all of our city functions on November the 8th, so I'll be doing that as well. So, we're looking forward to having them here, and to learn more about our city, and actually, our community of all.
Please come up and introduce yourself, let us know who you are.
It's hard to sit through this.
I'm Roger Pate, I'm employed with BSH here in Craven County, and City of New Bern, and my wife and I have lived here now for 11 years.
Awesome, welcome.
Welcome.
Deborah Lee Brown, and I'm with Carolina East Health Systems.
Welcome.
I'm Angie Parker, and I'm with Moen.
Welcome.
And I owe you an email, Angie, and I'll get to that.
Sean Carroll, engineer with Moen.
Welcome.
I'm Amy Walsh, I'm the Marketing Director at the Twin Rivers YNCA.
Welcome.
I'm Chelsea Payne, I'm the Marketing Specialist at Triumph Palace.
Welcome.
I'm Sue McCarthy, I'm the volunteer at the Chamber.
Well, welcome.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Ed Martin, I'm the Head of Operations at Coastal Carolina Regional Airport.
Welcome. Great, good to have you with us, we've got a lot of great groups here tonight.
I look forward to great things from this group. When I talk to them, I always talk about the fact that you're here to learn about leadership, but after it's over, I want to see you somewhere in the mix, so, don't be shy, because we need good leaders in our community, all, in every aspect, so, you know, finish the class, it'll be great, it'll be the best experience of your life, but please get out there and serve our community in some leadership capacity.
And I'm sure we'll have some others, this is only a percentage of, what, you have like 25?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, so they have 22, but this is a certain portion of them tonight. That's all that happened.
We're going to get a new business, starting with Alderman Bingle?
A couple of things, I do have a couple of new business items, and I thank you, so, I don't see Charlie Bouchard here, so will somebody pass along to him, I've been having an issue at 512 and 514 Jefferson, 512 Jefferson, the city had to get back in there to fix electric situations, and put really bad ruts into, because the utilities are behind the house, not in front of the house, and the homeowner's really concerned, and I need somebody to get out there and fix it for them, because the water keeps ponding in their yard, that's how big the ruts are, so if we could make sure that we follow up on that. And then the other is, because of that easement, there's an easement in between the properties, so a tree has fallen in the easement, and it's leaning on neighbor's fence, and they're afraid it's going to tear down the fence, plus it's hanging on a suddenly line, so whose responsibility, it's in the easement, we need to get that taken care of.
Generally speaking, our easements are only for utility purposes only, private, I mean, trees on private fences would be the responsibility of whomever...
But the tree was in the easement, I believe it was in that area, or fell into the easement.
Yeah, and I'm not aware, and, and just, just to point out, I mean, you know, Jefferson Avenue, we had a project to take that electric line from the backyards to the front, probably, Jordan, what would you say, two years ago?
Before my time.
And we had a significant amount of kickback on that, so thus, it didn't get moved from the backyards to the front yards, to where we would not have to come into people's backyards and create ruts, and so forth and so on, so I just wanted to throw that out there, if they're still interested in potentially us pursuing that, I'm sure that our staff would probably very much work with them to try to get that out of their backyards.
So, Jordan, maybe we could get with me on that, we could go out there and look at it, I would appreciate that. And then, I would just like to say a big thank you, of course, to the city staff, everybody, our City Manager, for the great success of Mumfest, I mean, it was an awesome weekend, lots of people out, lots of people just having a chance to step away from the, you know, really bad challenges that we've had in the last several weeks, and it, you know, it happened because we had many volunteers step up, because the city stepped up, and it was really an awesome weekend, the concert was great, and they believe that they're probably going to be able to put somewhere between 80 and 90,000 dollars, maybe a little bit more into the Hurricane Relief Fund, so that was really great news, so thank you to Mark and his staff and everybody for a great weekend.
You want to mention Parma Lee?
Yeah, and so last week, the Mayor dragged me to Morgan's, and we met Parma Lee, it's a country group, and they are going to be out and about and performing, they wrote a song called Downtown, and it's for hurricane relief, not only for our downtown, but for all the impacted downtowns in Hurricane Florence, so every time you download the song, it's going to be donated to hurricane relief, so they were here, they did a little impromptu session at Morgan's, and what a great group of guys, they're from Robertsonville, but they're climbing up the charts with the song, and it's pretty cool that they came to Eastern North Carolina to just be here to support us, and say, hey, we're behind you, and we want to put some money into the community.
I don't have a lot on the concert over in Greenwood, you, you have much on that at this time?
No, but that's in November, I'll get it in our next meeting.
We're looking, we want to mention all these things that are happening, because they're all, they're fundraisers, and they're just great opportunities for us all to kind of get together, and, and, you know, be our neighbor to each other, and continue to lift up our New Bern and Craven County.
One more thing, because I see the chief there, parking enforcement will begin again on October 29th, if you have an issue with any of that, call Chief. But anyway, we will be back to enforcing parking on October 29th.
Okay, Alderman Harris?
Only thing I have is to report to the Board that I will be going to the National League of Cities in a week or so, so if there's any questions, or anything that you want me to go and bring and find out, because it's the city summit, and there'll be elected officials there, government there, doing different sessions and stuff, if there's anything you want me to bring and stand up and ask, send me an email, I will be at that Tuesday meeting, so I can report back to you guys, all of the good things that I learned again, like I did when I was at DC. That's it.
Okay.
Who's the agenda? Who's the agenda on mine?
Yeah, it's great.
Yes, just a couple of things, Mr. Stevens, did you ever get with the county, and do you know if they were able to provide any mental health professionals to the shelter, as was requested at the last meeting?
I'm, I'm not aware of that at this time, but I'm more than happy to check with them, and see whether they got that out there, sorry.
Mark, let me make a suggestion, there's that Craven County Disaster Recovery Group, and I did go to the meeting last week, and they have a whole group of counselors, that their job is going to be to offer free counseling to anybody that's been impacted by the storm, including the shelters, so I would contact, they have a subgroup, subcommittee.
I know the Shelter Red Cross guy that was here at the last meeting, said it would be nice if they just walked around out there, and, you know, said, can I help you with anything, or is everything okay? I think it'd be a good way to help them out, and also, Mark, keep your ears open, if you don't mind, I've heard through the grapevine, that there might be some grant monies coming available to use to clean out ditches and canals that were affected by this hurricane. I'll, I'll research it as much as I can, too, but that would certainly be nice if we could, and even convince the state to get on that big canal down side of the bypass, you know, because I know, I know Mark, I mean, Matt's got to have, I'm sure you're keeping a list of some of the areas that are, have been clogged up, because all of that's reimbursable by FEMA, photographs and everything would be needed, and, but it'd be nice if we could look for some grant monies to clean out these several miles of ditches and canals that we have around here. Thank you, that's all I have.
It's great.
Alderman Kinsey?
Well, I have to reach out, just to tell everyone, thank you for cooperating with us during Florida, I mean, Florence, and that it was a lot of time, just a lot of people still behind and hurt from that, and I feel very strong that in our retreat, that that's something that we're going to really sit down and concentrate on, and look to learn from what has happened to us, that we can be a better server, serving the community better. Anytime you have anything that's catastrophic, you learn from that, you never can be over-prepared or under-prepared for any catastrophic event that could take place, and that's something that we have learned a lot from. A lot of times, you can't really see what's going on, on the outside, or in the inside, but you have to understand, you have to trust the people that's before you, that they are doing the best that they can with what we have, to make it work and happen for everyone, and that's what this Board stands for, is to take care of this city, and I am very proud to serve with these guys, that have really spent a lot of time and effort to really take care of this city. I've heard some things that I didn't understand, but I couldn't challenge that, because they wasn't where we was at, and until you can see a set where we are, to do what we do, it's a lot of work involved, and we're going to continue, as a Board, to serve this city, and make things work, and make it happen, and we learned a lot this time, from what just happened to us, and we're going to prepare and be ready, that's all I have to say, sir.
Okay, Alderman Best?
Mark, also, I was on the FEMA's website, and I saw that there, also, there are additional monies besides the CDBG grant money that we currently get, that there was also monies available because of this hurricane, due to hurricanes, so I don't know if that's something you might want to check into as well?
Also, a Mr., not Mr., sorry, correct myself, Pastor David Fuetes, he is the pastor over at West New Bern Presbyterian Church here in New Bern, and he contacted me to let me know that he had, at the present time, have a group of volunteers that's lodging at his church, that if anyone is in a need of any type of cleanup, gutting out, or whatever it may be, that please contact his church, and that he will also have another group here in November, so please reach out to him, and I have his number here, but it's West New Bern Presbyterian Church, and it's 638-1005. Also, okay, some text, oh, yes, a Mr., I'm quite sure a lot of you are familiar with Mr. Curtis Stewart, he is one of the Omegas that is now operating in the Omega Center, along with his, with the other Omegas, and he and I was talking, and him and his group, they are, they have really put some time and work into getting the Omega Center back up and operating, and there was a religious group that came into town on Sunday, and they went over there, and they have painted that building, it is, it is gorgeous outside, and also, they painted the building inside. They are in the process of renovating the kitchen, and he says that they want to make that Omega Center a multi-purpose center, to serve the citizens of the community and the City of New Bern as well, and he also said that one of his challenges right now was the fact that the Omega Center, there's not enough parking, so he's wanting to know if the Board would consider, there's two lots on Burn Street, that the city-owned property that the city acquired in 2009, those lots are just sitting there vacant, and he wants to know if that property, those two lots, could be, you know, somehow given to the Omega Center to, or transferred over, however the city wants to handle that. So, I'm asking this Board if y'all would take into consideration that, that property would be utilized, it could be utilized as a public parking lot as well, to accommodate the Police Department, their ball field there, the Kefal Park there, when they have different activities there, it could be used for public parking, as well as for the Omega Center. A lot of you know that during Hurricane Florence, after, we're going through our recovery period, that Mr. Stewart opened up the Omega Center, reached out... that Mr. Stewart opened up the Omega Center, reached out, helped our citizens. It was a distribution center, and it served the community well. So I feel that this time, I think now is for a time that this board, this city can give back to the Omegas. So if that's something that we can discuss, I don't know if we have to discuss it at a later date, or is something that we can discuss now, how you feel about that piece of property?
I think probably the recommended or appropriate action would be is for them to submit that through a formal request letter on their letterhead. I would assume that they're a nonprofit. If they aren't, we would have to sell the property. If they are a nonprofit, then obviously we have other options. But ultimately, we need to be able to vet all of that process. And so my thoughts would be is for the ease of everything, is for them to have that official submitted request with the properties. We can help give them the property numbers or whatever. I'm not familiar with the specific pieces of property they're talking about.
It's 808 Burns and 810 Burn Street. Let me make sure I got that right. Yes, 808 and 810 Burn Street. And I have the parcel numbers here if you need them. But I just wanted to discuss that with the board at this time, so, you know, I don't know how each of us feel about that. But I think it's, it's a great time that we could give back to that Omega Center, which is a part of New Bern. It's a historical site, it's been utilized in so many ways to help this community, our community.
And once again, I think it would probably be, if we can get a formal request letter, I, we need to research it. I want to make sure that it's not a FEMA buyout lot that we had that has restrictions, and what we can do with the property or what we can't do with the property. So I need to know all of that information, and I can definitely look that up now, but I think it may be a little preliminary to be making a decision on it as a board right now.
And I just wanted to bring it to the board tonight, so that y'all can think about it.
Wouldn't the redevelopment commission be the one to make that decision now, Mr. Davis?
Well, you've not committed property to them, so it's still, property's still titled in the name of the city, so it's your decision. You could certainly, you know, at a later date, transfer to the redevelopment commission, and they could decide.
I'd like for them to make the formal request and then have the discussion. I think that's the best. I mean, it's no sense in talking about it now, and they don't make a formal request or whatever, but I think once they make the, once they make the formal request, that starts the whole process.
I agree with that. Anybody else, everybody else in agreement with that? Okay. All right, what else do you have?
That is it, thank you.
Alvin Odom?
Nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Do we need a closed session tonight?
Not at that rate.
Is there any other, anybody?
Are there any of you still here? We had, we had said that any of the residents that wanted to speak during new business, I think it was, that were here for their first work session, did we not?
Are there residents here that need to speak?
Okay. Are there any residents that are here that were at the workshop that would like to ask any questions?
Ms. Christine, is that you, Kelly? I recognized you from the meeting. I believe Ms. Christine is a resident of Trent Court, and I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there was some confusion about the agenda item that we originally had on there, about Trent Court potentially being sold. That was incorrect information. I had a wonderful conversation with Ms. Christine about it, and the item was for us to sell property to the housing authority that we owned in a different space. That was pulled from the agenda, so it's not even on the agenda tonight. So, and I think that's why you may have been here to speak to that tonight. Is that correct? Okay. I just want to make sure we got you covered. You are so welcome.
Okay, anything else to come forward, the board of aldermen at this time?
Make motion, the adjourn.
Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, the same.